I'd like to call to order the regular Storm Lake City Council meeting of May 5th. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first item, then is there any considerations to any changes to the agenda, council? Do we have this council member McKee on line?
He's not.
He's not, so it's just the four. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Martinez. Seconded by Councilperson Ramos. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is set. Do we have any disclosures by any city council members to any items on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, then we will move on to hear the public. Do we have anyone here who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? If so, if you please step up to the podium and identify yourself. Do we have anyone online at star six to unmute? Nothing? Well, then you're gonna have to listen to me for a little bit. We've got a couple proclamations for the upcoming weeks, so we'll read through those. The first one proclamation is Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial, and that's from May 12th through the 18th. And it states, whereas law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding life, property, and rights of all residents, whereas police officers and staff unceasingly provide a vital public service in our community and across the nation, and whereas selfless public service and dedicated enforcement of our laws make our communities safer places to live while bringing honor to the profession, and whereas police in the community have continually created new outreach opportunities to inform and involve the public, and whereas National Police Week was proclaimed by President Kennedy in 1962 and is commemorated each year, also serving as a time of special recognition and remembrance for those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty while protecting others, and whereas National Police Week offers communities the opportunity to recognize the service and sacrifice of our police forces, offer our support for police officer, staff, and their families, and pay homage to those who have lost their lives or become disabled while serving the public, and whereas it is appropriate to show our appreciation and gratitude for the men and women who courageously protect our communities at this time and year round. Now therefore, I Michael Porsche, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 12th through the 18th as Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Week in the city of Storm Lake. Signed and sealed this fifth day of May 2025. And it goes without saying how much we appreciate our police force in Storm Lake, and not only at the county sheriff, and the sheriff within the county also, the police officers that serve our communities. It just is immeasurable how much they mean to our communities and how they serve our public, and we appreciate everything you guys do for our communities. Next one is, the proclamation is Public Service Recognition Week, and that is May 4th through the 10th. And whereas over 20 million people, or 20 million public servants work tirelessly every day to improve and maintain the communities across our nation, providing the vital services that our citizens depend upon, and whereas these two often unsung heroes perform many diverse tasks in our community from snow removal to street repair and sweeping, parks grooming to stormwater collection, system maintenance, tree trimming, to dock placement, and many more, and whereas public service employees demonstrate dedication, sacrifice, and resilience in delivering essential services to the people of the community, and whereas Storm Lake's Public Service Department has responded in especially exemplary fashion to the challenges of storm damage cleanup and repairs this season, and whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been designated by the President and Congress as the full week of May each year to honor public employees who put service above themselves, and is most appropriate that we recognize the service and accomplishments of our public service workers during this time and year round. Now therefore, I Michael Porsche, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th as Public Service Recognition Week in the city of Storm Lake, Iowa. Signed and sealed this fifth day of May 2025. And these truly are unsung people over the last few weeks, all the hours, and not only just the hours, but the ungodly hours of the day that they had to put in to clean up our community and do that, now you can drive through the community and hardly looks like anything even happened here, and that's, they are to be commended for the hard work that our public service workers put in. So thank you to all of them. And one more, we're catching everybody in the city. This proclamation is Municipal Clerks Week, May 4th through the 10th. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is a vital part of local government in Storm Lake and communities around the world, and is honored as the oldest among all public services, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk serves as a vital link between the residents of the community, the local governing body, and agencies of government at all levels, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and the community, pledging fair, impartial, and equal service to all, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the function of the office and of local government by participating in ongoing education, training, professional organizations, and their meetings, and whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the service and accomplishments of our dedicated city clerk's office during this week and year round. Now therefore, I Michael Porsche, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th as Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Storm Lake, Iowa. Signed, sealed this fifth day of May 2025. And I think personally, I can't thank Clerk Martinez and Assistant Clerk Nelda Kirkholm for all the work they do, these meetings would not go on as smoothly as they do without their help, and I know that behind the scenes I get a lot more help from those two that I truly need just to make the computers run so I can follow through and follow the order of the agenda, so I do truly thank you, Nelda, for everything you guys do, so. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda then. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda, council? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson McKeon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Martinez. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry. Okay. Next item then is a motion to approve a special event permit for Dominique Clashen of Car Meets. Sorry if I destroyed your name, I should have asked you that beforehand to make sure I got that right, but that will turn over to Mr. Derrigan.
Honorable Mayor and Council, not long ago Dominique Clashen brought this to our attention, that he would like to hold car meets Fridays from 4:00 to 7:00 in Storm Lake. Initially, his thought process was Kings Point Parking Lot, Chautauqua Park. Dominique and I went around and toured the sites that were available, and I think I encouraged him not to go to Chautauqua Park or Kings Point for the events that he would like to hold. So he's organized this and has insurance available, they have rules that they go by for these events, and we've kind of come down to two possible locations, which would be the Discovery Center Parking Lot, which is full of trees right now, or Frank Star Park, and try one or the other. I haven't formally recommended one or the other because I would like council input as this is a new event in the community, and I would also like Dominique to have the opportunity to explain what the meet is, what it accomplishes, and kind of the purpose behind it. So if it meets with your approval, I would call him to the podium now. We'll test his public speaking skills.
I would love to hear about the project.
First of all, thank you guys for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. So essentially my goal with the car meets, I'm sure as many of you know or have seen recently in the news of hostile takeover events with young people in cars where people will be taking over entire intersections and people get hurt and sometimes even lives are lost at these events. My goal with the car meets here in the city are to break this stigma of those bad eggs doing what they very clearly should not be doing, and build a good and a better name for the car community here and as, you know, a global, global community. So with that being said, I thought Storm Lake would be an excellent place to host these events. In high school, my buddies and I would come over from Cherokee, and we'd come over and just drive around town here because the enthusiast, or the enthusiast presence is, whether or not most people notice it, but it is here in town, and you see people with the nice cars driving up and down on the street with a beautiful day like this, and I think it would just be an excellent place to start. There's already kind of a community, whether or not it's recognized.
So what do you do at these meets?
So that's one thing David mentioned to me, is you guys weren't quite sure on the idea, so it's not like a crazy racing event or anything like that. The rules as mentioned on my website and flyers posted on social media and whatnot include no burnouts, no excessive engine revving, no littering, no alcohol, things like that. It's, you can almost think of it like going to the golf course with your buddies. You're not necessarily there to play golf, but more just hang out and have a good time with your pals, right? No one's going for the pro championship, you're there to have a good time, and so no one's going to do crazy burnouts or races or, you know, fast and furious competitions, but just to be more involved as a community in a place together where they can share and talk about these things, common interests.
Have you done this anywhere else?
No. No, I do have a couple of friends in town who will have like smaller meets, just kind of like their little friend group, say like four to five people in cars, will get together and they'll hang out often, and encourage new people who stop by to come hang out and chat with them, and it's a great way to make friends. I have not hosted an event personally yet.
Are those the ones that are right now being held at Kings Point Parking Lot?
That would be them.
So those aren't the cars that are going speeding down the street afterwards, right?
No, no. I mean, I guess I can't speak, I'm not usually there, I live in Cherokee, but I do know that they go there often.
Just go with your personal.
Yeah, right.
So would you be at these meets? Are you the point person that would be monitoring everything?
Yes, so I pick Friday because I have every Friday off. Whenever possible, I'm sure that there would be potentially a couple days that I wouldn't be able to make it, and I would appoint someone else to kind of keep watch, make sure nothing gets out of control, you know, talk to people, see how everybody's doing, make sure that if anyone is doing, you know, like mentioned, burnouts, crazy revving, hey, you know, you need to kind of stop that, or you're gonna have to leave, kind of thing, but yes, I would do my very best to be at every single one of them.
So we would know who the point person was on every Friday?
Yes, yes, I could let that be informed if needed.
So the purpose of this is just to gather and just talk about each other's cars, or... I mean, I see them park on certain locations, but I'm not sure what the whole purpose and idea is, is it just to show off each other's cars, or talk about, what is the purpose?
That's a really good question. So I guess the best way I can describe it is not necessarily like, oh, you know, look at this beautiful thing, or trying to like one-up each other, but kind of like going to this skate park as a skateboarder, you, just being able to meet people with common interest. It's like, you know, if your hobby is basketball, you know, you show up to the basketball court, you shoot a few hoops and meet people with similar interests, you find things to talk about, maybe you end up being great friends. If your interest is golf, you go to the golf course, similar kind of thing, but just creating an area for people with similar interests to get together and have a good time.
So I have some questions about the proposal specifics. I say 27 Friday meets, do we have a calendar set up? How are those dates going to be determined?
If you want to approve it, I will set all of that up for your review.
And is it mostly during the summer?
Yes.
Okay. I also have an opinion about location. So Frank Star Park, today's a Monday, it's a beautiful day, that parking lot is full. It was full when I came here today because it is a playground, it's got lots of gathering places, it's a favorite picnic area, I would not like that to be interfered with. You know, there's soccer always going on over there, so it is purely a recreation area. And sometimes even on Fridays, there's, all the spaces are taken and they create some new spaces, so I would prefer discovery, for sure.
What is the times?
I mean, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Four to seven.
So still sunny out.
Prime family time.
Yeah, we'll agree with that.
Either way, I think when we had talked about this a little bit previously, if it doesn't go well, then it, we're not solidifying the whole summer if it doesn't go well. Not that it's gonna go back.
If there were to be any problems, would you just revoke that?
Okay.
And have we gotten...
That would be part of the...
Okay. And has Chief Cole had an opportunity to review this and give input?
Yeah.
Have you been turned down somewhere, anywhere else? I'm just wondering.
I'm also a photographer, so I've been turned down, not for like car meets, but like in general, yeah. Not a new experience.
I agree.
But no, for car meets.
No, no, this is the first I proposed, yes. And I wanted to go about it the correct way and talk to you guys.
We appreciate it.
Not just have everybody get upset because all of a sudden there's 20 cars parked over here and what's going on.
Do they keep them on during this, or do they turn them off?
I would assume that we're paying quite a bit for premium gas, I don't think they want to run it the whole time.
Any other questions for Dominique?
Any other questions, concerns?
If you didn't get an A in public speaking, we give you an A. You did a great job.
Thank you, this is a first.
You did well.
Good jobs.
Mr. Derrigan has not gotten up to your level yet.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna make him move the trees out of Discovery before he...
And actually, when we finished our tour, my recommendation when I wrote this was the Discovery Center Lot first, and then Frank Star. When I sent it to Dominique, he said he'd like Frank Star, and I thought, okay, see how it goes.
Discovery makes perfect sense.
Do we have a feeling that Discovery might be available?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, further down on the agenda, you'll see that you have a ratification of a contract for a tree grinding service. They will be here no later than May 14th, and it should only take a couple days, they said, so that was probably about an hour and a half ago when I heard that from the company.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
Fourth of July probably wouldn't work.
No, when there's events like that, we wouldn't agree with that. I'll lay out the dates and confirm with Dominique, we'll give all of that to you.
Anything else? If not, then I entertain a motion to approve the special event permit for Dominique Clashen for car meets. So moved by Councilperson Rickles.
I'd like to be clear as to location that we're approving, because the motion says both places. I'm strongly opposed to Frank Star Park. So what's the motion for, for either or for one?
I'd say for Discovery.
Discovery.
Okay, for Discovery.
Okay, so I vote in favor of as amended.
Okay, so that was moved by Councilperson Rickles, seconded by Councilperson McKeon. All in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That will carry.
Thank you. I might bring my Subaru.
Go check it out.
Okay, next item is outdoor warning sirens discussion. Ms. Aberkile.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. At our last city council meeting, there was a request to have a discussion on outdoor warning siren signals, so we have here this evening, we have Sheriff Elston, and then we have the Buena Vista County Emergency Management Coordinator, Amy Barrett, to answer any questions and to give a brief explanation of what and how they're used, and I guess more importantly, when they get turned on.
So if you two would like to identify yourselves for those that don't know who you are for the record.
I'm Amy Barrett, I'm the Buena Vista County Emergency Management Coordinator.
And I'm Cory Elston, Buena Vista County Sheriff.
Let me hand you though.
Sure.
We brought handouts.
All right.
Thank you.
And I think you may already have a copy of...
Thank you.
This is what's on the email.
It also includes a copy of the severe thunderstorm warning that was issued at 12:59 AM on April 18th.
So essentially, this policy was last updated in 2019, and basically is just as recommended by the National Weather Service is what we did. So as you can see, the criteria there for setting off the outdoor tornado sirens is we receive an alarm from the National Weather Service with a tornado warning, obviously that's first and foremost, the second one is a thunderstorm warning with winds exceeding 80 or above. And then finally, any law enforcement, fire chief, first responder can ask for the sirens to be set off as well. So unfortunately, our last storm that caused all the damage, we didn't have any of those.
None of the criteria were met, and in my discussions with the National Weather Service, when this storm was warned at 12:59 AM, the biggest concern was golf ball sized hail. As you can see on the second page of that warning, there, at the very bottom, it indicates their primary concerns, and their primary concern at that point was 1.75 inch diameter hail. They had radar indicated the maximum wind gusts to be less than 50 miles an hour. So this storm did not meet our criteria for sirens, and it also came on so suddenly and ended so suddenly that there wasn't time for a first responder to call in to the comm center and say, hey, can you sound the sirens, because it was over about as quick as it began.
Yeah, unfortunately, that storm, we didn't have much advance notice of anything as compared to this storm last Monday, we had all kinds of advance notice of potential wind, tornadoes, hail, et cetera, and that turned out to be fortunately not as severe as the prior storm, but yeah, it just came quick. Cloud of thunder, yes, for sure, but again, none of these elements meant setting it off. And I asked Amy to contact the National Weather Service and ask them if we need to update or recommend any changes to the policy, and I believe the answer to that was no.
But we're actually, our policy is actually ahead of many other counties and communities because a lot of them don't account for the severe thunderstorm warnings that have winds greater than 80 miles an hour. In a lot of jurisdictions, this policy applies to all of Bevie County, there's a lot of other counties and communities that outside of Bevie County, that they won't sound sirens for high wind events, like in a severe thunderstorm warning. And realistically for us, we don't care if it's a violently rotating column of air or if it's a straight line wind, if it's gonna be 80 miles an hour or above, it's going to cause significant damage, we want to make sure we sound sirens. But the other issue is, is sirens are outdoor warning, they're intended for outdoors. At 1:14 AM, not very much of the population is outdoors, and that's where we want people to understand that you should have a NOAA weather radio, those things will alert you if they did go off, and other ways of receiving warning for when you're indoors. We want to really stress that because you can't guarantee that a tornado siren is going to wake you up at 1:14 in the morning.
Have any questions for...
Just curiosity, do we know with the storm, with the straight line winds, what the speed of the wind was?
We had at the fastest recorded wind at our office, we have a weather tower there, it was 75 miles an hour when the tower got blown over. That's the fastest known wind speed that I've heard.
Thank you.
And there are some possible updates you can get to your sirens, I got my IT person looking into that. There are sensors available now that you can buy and put on these sirens that if a wind meets a certain speed, it automatically goes off, takes the human element out of it, and I will get you that information when I receive it.
But again, it was so fast.
It was so fast.
And it was like, I mean, I obviously wasn't up at that time in the morning, but apparently there was nothing, as it was moving in, there must not have been anything previous as it was coming this way to that room.
No, and when I spoke with Todd Hakecamp, who is in charge of the Sioux Falls National Weather Service Office, Todd and I had a discussion about this storm because I called him up and I said, hey Todd, what happened? This was supposed to be no winds greater than 50, and he called it a microburst, and it was just, you know, weather sometimes is just gonna do what it wants to do, and it's not going to obey the National Weather Service's warnings, and so at some point the wind speed picked up and we had significant winds that caused a lot of damage.
Thank you for clarifying that purpose and the target audience for the alarm system because a lot of people are confused and think that they should be hearing it indoors.
Nope, it's outdoor warning only.
Unless you live right across the street from it.
It raises us up in the basement.
Well, they said, the old Iowa joke is, when the Iowans hear the tornado siren go off, what do they do? They go outside?
That's the other part of that that I always saw as funny, I mean, the sirens would go off at, if they would go off right before 1:00, so what's that gonna do, send everybody outside to see what's going on, so. But no, I appreciate you guys bringing the information.
Sure.
Appreciate the clarity.
I think it's, the clarity is important for everybody in the community.
And getting everybody signed up for the Bevie alerts on our phones and...
I think that's big. We have about 5,000 people in county signed up for that, plenty of room for more.
Yeah, and great job coordinating the cleanup and keeping everybody safe after it hit us.
Your safety staff did an amazing job, that's, they're all great to work with, and they did a lot of work very quickly. It was very impressive to watch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item then is the motion to approve the updated comprehensive housing needs analysis for Storm Lake, Iowa. Mr. Dutfield.
Happy Cinco de Mayo. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. A comprehensive housing needs analysis for Storm Lake, Iowa was conducted by Maxfield Research and Consulting, and the study projected housing demand from 2024 to 2035 and provided, provides recommendations on the amount and type of housing that could be built in Storm Lake to satisfy demand for current and future residents over the next decade, and as you remember, Matt Mullins from Maxfield Research and Consulting paid a visit and presented his findings to council at our April 21st council meeting. Hopefully you have had a chance to review the housing study report, it's quite comprehensive, all 145 pages of it or whereabouts. It is the recommendation to approve this updated comprehensive housing needs analysis report.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Dutfield at this point? I mean, I just, the last housing need we had, we had the need for all the housing, and we've made progress. But it's still a long ways from where you need to be when you see a housing study like that.
It's nice because our last one was in 2017. And yes, you know, obviously, things have changed. The demand is still there. We're going to be able to utilize this report. Certainly, it's a requirement for the workforce housing tax credit program. So that'll be helpful there. Also, Mr. Mullins has provided us with some suggestions, recommendations. And we've identified the types of housing we need. So it's a great document so that we can move forward and start working on our housing.
I think the housing, you look at as, it's not really a problem, it's a challenge. The problem would be if you have a bunch of empty houses with nobody.
Right. I mean, it was encouraging that we're a growing community. So there, I mean, there were some good positive things, but also showing that we have a lot of work ahead of us. Especially when it comes to seniors too, so.
The only thing is, it's disappointing that they're using a census that doesn't make any sense to get some of the numbers.
Yeah, he did, I mean, he had, part of the study was making contact. I know with some of the rental, people who provide rental homes, the real estate agents in town. So there was some work on the ground too completed. But yes, you know, that's the problem with the census. There was also ESRI data used. So that was another, which is a little bit more, it's a different, but sometimes a little bit more reliable. Of course, you know, but with what he was able to determine.
It was from somewhere.
Yes, yeah.
And with that being said, that we had the housing needs brought up on this assessment. And we can only think that the housing needs are actually more than what that assessment are greater than what that assessment brought forth, so. We do have some work ahead of us.
And everybody's census wasn't really great. It wasn't just.
Correct.
And I like the fact that he identifies that, you know, we're a job importer too. People are coming here. So there's, you know, there's reasons to, for developers to want to build here. We just need to make that happen.
We need to find land.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was a huge, I mean, that was a huge point made in the report, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
So I guess what is our next step? I mean, obviously, we approved this, but I mean, we need to find land, right?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and Council, there's, this is kind of, I guess, a twofold comprehensive housing needs analysis. Number one, if any developer looking in Storm Lake or wants to build in Storm Lake and wants to apply for workforce housing tax credits, this document needs to be approved by city council. And that just shows the state that we are, we are in need of housing. So that's step number one. Step number two is working and trying to figure out, again, not all of it's a city, you know, a city-driven project, but figuring out where land can be either purchased or where housing develop will be natural. And so we've identified some of those parcels.
And maybe it's better to have a community, a community, you know, bankers, real estate agents, landlords or whatever involved. Maybe they have, some of those folks might have a better, better chance to go visit with somebody about getting land than maybe somebody from the city does. So maybe a next step would be, you know, a type of task force or committee such as that to move forward with. Any other questions?
Honorable Mayor and Council, just for the record, we have Council McKenney on.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
McKenney, Councilperson, McKenney, can you hear us?
Oh, he's setting up. We see him.
Thumbs up, okay. Thumbs up is good. If there is no other questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve the updated comprehensive housing needs analysis for Storm Lake, Iowa.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson McKeon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Ramos. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That will carry.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Next item is a public hearing on ordinance amending city code chapter 3-4 Water Works Maintenance. I will open that public hearing. We have a whole host of people. We'll start with Ms. Navratil.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. You'll notice that we have a lot of names that are on the agenda. I found something out that when you write your agenda item, you can add more than one person. So I did that this evening. But what we have before you is the code updates for Water Works. So the public hearing tonight is for amending city code chapter 3-4 Water Works Maintenance. Currently, the code that we are practicing under right now is, it doesn't have a lot of teeth into it. So when we have any water service line breaks, meters that need to get replaced, curb stops that need to be fixed, there's really, we just send a letter and then hope that it's going to get fixed. We've practiced that way for many, many years. It's not working. And so working with our attorney and looking at other communities that have similar codes, we have before you the updated code chapter 3-4. The addition is defining that water leaks are considered emergency maintenance. We took that line because a lot of the service line leaks do happen in winter time. They can cause ice in the road. The other situation that we always have to be cognizant of as well, we're an MS4 community and we have to be careful of what type of water goes into our storm sewers. So anything that's chlorinated, which service lines are, we have to track and notify the DNR when that occurs. Then we'll have our water team out there either putting dechlorination tablets or waters, waddles, anything like that to make sure that that water does not get into our lake. Then we also added definitions to allow for curb stops to get repaired and then also meters to get repaired. An advice of our attorney and looking at other communities, a lot of the dates that we had discussed are outlined in administrative policy, which will be coming forward to you in the next meeting or around first or probably second reading when we decide and work through first reading here. So the, right now, we have, and this is a couple of weeks old, but we have five water leaks, 151 curb stops that need to get repaired, and then 73 meters that need to be addressed. And our utility billing staff is adding to those numbers every day.
So are curb stops and meters considered emergency?
No, they are not.
Okay, just the water leaks.
Unless, well, unless if the curb stops leaking, I should say. If the curb stops leaking, it will be considered an emergency.
Do we have anyone here who would like to speak at this public hearing? On this topic? Do we have anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing? It's star six to unmute. We had anybody contact City Hall at all minute?
We have not.
Any further comment or questions, Council? That you would like to add at the public hearing? Hearing done, then I will close the public hearing. Next up then is ordinance number 6-0-2024, 2025, amending city code chapter 3-4 Water Works Maintenance. And this is the first reading. Ms. Navratil.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I have nothing additional to add that was discussed during our public hearing.
Anybody have any questions or any comments they'd like to add? Hearing done, then I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 6-0-2024, 2025, amending the city code chapter 3-4 Water Works Maintenance. This is the first of three readings. So moved by Councilperson Rickles.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Ramos. This will be a roll call vote, so Councilperson Ramos.
Aye.
Councilperson Martinez.
Aye.
Councilperson Rickles.
Aye.
Councilperson McKeon.
Aye.
And Councilperson McKenney.
Aye.
That will carry. Next item then is a motion to set a public hearing on amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. The city is required to amend the budget anytime expenses are estimated to exceed the prior authorized budget authorized by the city council. This amended amendment will account for carryover projects for the current fiscal year into the next fiscal year. When we originally budget, we anticipate the full completion of all of our projects, though this is not the case with the construction years. So this budget will clarify the anticipated dollar for the current fiscal year and while considering the amount in the next fiscal year, which was previously approved in the 24, 20, or 25, 26 budget. Additionally, this year, we will have some additional costs that incurred due to the damages from the storm here this last month that were unaccounted for. The cost of the amendment is the publication as required by law. Recommendation is to set the public hearing for the May 19th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers.
Do you have any questions or comments, Council? Hearing done, then I'd entertain a motion to set the public hearing on amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget for May 19th at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Moved by Councilperson McKeon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Martinez. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That will carry. Next item then is a motion to ratify Ceres Environmental Services Inc. contract and amendment. Ms. Navratil.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. The contract and information that you have before you is for a tree vegetation grinding company to come into Storm Lake and to grind all the trees down that were deposited at the Discovery Center, our burn pile, and then also the recycle center. We believe that there's about 10,000 cubic yards of trees that may need to be ground. And we're using a ballpark here because we're still getting tree debris being dropped off every night. And then we also have GoServe Global who will complete their tree cleanup by Friday. So the number, so because of the proclamation of Governor Reynolds that issued a disaster proclamation on April 18th, that allowed, and then also Mayor Porche issued a disaster proclamation for Storm Lake. That triggered the ability for the city of Storm Lake to work with the State of Iowa Emergency Management's Master Agreement Contract with Ceres Environmental Services. So basically, what the state does is they go out and they get bids on behalf of disasters and that we're able to utilize if we are just under a disaster proclamation, which we were. So the state took care of all the bidding, all the insurance documents, everything. And then we were just told this is, you know, a couple businesses that would be able to tree grind. Ceres was the first one that was responded. They will be here by May 14th to come and grind the tree debris that we have. The amendment that I have on the contract is for them to grind it toward, to mulch size. So at Discovery Center, all the trees would be mulched there. And then that would allow the public to come in and pick up and load the mulch and take it back with them. So it would be used for the public. It'd also clean up the Discovery Center parking lot that is very full at the moment. And then we have the cost proposal for Ceres that was negotiated with the State of Iowa. And so really, this is just notifying you that I contacted the Ceres Environmental Services and signed the contract on behalf of the city to get them coming here. It's been about a two-week process.
So then the mulch stays there until weekly with that?
Right, we'll have to clean it up, yes. And, but the public will be able to come in and use it.
Like if you wanted some yourself, you could go.
What does that look like? I mean, is it going to be the whole Discovery Park like?
No, it won't be the, no, it won't be the whole Discovery Park.
Hopefully, they would not put it in the middle of the.
Right, we'll, no.
I think, I think people will be excited to be able to go and get that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You go now, you go out to the recycling center. So I think it's good for the public to know that they can access it.
Great, and right now, we're, I think we're seeing kind of the tail end of the tree debris being dropped off. We're seeing other items being dropped off, which we can accept, which might cause a problem with our vegetation grinding services. So we just want to make sure that is out there.
I have a question about that. Do we want to continue to allow Discovery Center parking to be open for continued dumping of the trees? Or do we need to put some barrier up now that we're seeing other debris being just kind of deposited there that isn't environmentally safe or friendly?
Right, well, with GoServe Global ending on Friday, I would say that would be when they're done. We would put barricades up. However, it's not going to be monitored 24/7 and we won't be able to see if there's anything being dropped off that shouldn't. But we do have an end in sight. By allowing this contract to, this contractor to come in, it would remove our public services from removing the debris because we were looking at moving it to our burn pile, burning it. We just need to get back to what we need to be doing, back to normal operating of business. Because all of our staff in that department is being devoted to storm cleanup right now. Other stuff needs to get done. And so I just, yeah, so the motion that you would have is to ratify the contract that was signed on behalf of the city of Storm Lake to get them here.
And we're estimating the cost. So it's like a maximum $75,000 is what we're improving?
Correct. Right now, I have a estimated cost of $49,500, but that was numbers from Friday, so.
Seems to have grown.
It's, sorry?
It seems to have grown.
It seems to have grown a little bit, yes. Again, and that's just an estimated cost. If there's more trees that get delivered and dropped off, then we're going to be paying that. And so that would be, I would be coming forward to city council if that cost does exceed the $75,000. I presume if that happens, we still want the trees to go away. So we'll. Well, they would be here for two days, so it would be between a city council meeting the 14th, so, 14th, 16th.
And they think they can do this in how long?
They said they would get it done in two days.
And they'll just work during like day hours?
Correct, mm-hmm. Yeah, they come in with fairly significant pieces of equipment, so. I mean, they've, this company's gone to like Hurricane Katrina and some other fairly large storms as well around the country. They know what they're doing. Yes. So if the cost is over $75,000, we would just continue with the grinding.
And this isn't just, this is all of.
This is all of our sites, yes.
This isn't just there, it's a burn site.
Every place where there's a tree dump at the moment. So it's three locations.
Any other questions?
It's good that they were able to come as quickly. I think that's.
The quicker we get it taken care of, the quicker we'll keep from having things dumped out there that we don't want anymore, so. Okay, with nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to ratify the Ceres Environmental Services Inc. contract and amendment.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Martinez.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Rickles. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That will carry. Next item then is a public hearing on granting a utility easement to Tyson Foods, Inc. I will open that public hearing. Mr. Deragon.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Tyson is working on a project in Storm Lake to replace the wastewater treatment inlet structure at their plant. Part of the replacement plan is to install a new valve bolt on the city of Storm Lake's wastewater treatment property. This public hearing is to take comments from the public regarding this potential transfer, this potential easement.
Do we have anyone here who would like to address, would like to speak at this particular public hearing on this topic? Do we have anyone online that would like to? Do we have anyone online that would like to speak at star six? Anybody contacted City Hall or?
We have none.
Council, do you have any comments at this point? Hearing done then, I will close the public hearing. Next then is the resolution number 67-R-2024-2025 granting a utility easement to Tyson Foods, Inc. Mr. Deragon.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this item will, by resolution, grant the utility easement to Tyson Foods that we previously discussed at the public hearing. And I have nothing more to add.
Is this just for the, that valve vault? Or is this, I was reading something about pipe running through? 16-inch force main running across the city property too? Is that included in this easement or is that?
I think just.
Or is that already?
That's already there.
Already there.
Yes.
Any questions or comments, Council? Hearing done then, I entertain a motion to approve resolution number 67-R-2024-2025 granting a utility easement to Tyson Foods, Inc. Is that moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilperson Rickliff and second by Councilperson Ramos. So, it must be a roll call vote. So, Councilperson Martinez.
Aye.
Councilperson Rickliff.
Aye.
Councilperson McKeon.
Aye.
Councilperson McKinney.
Aye.
And Councilperson Ramos.
Aye.
That will carry. Next item is resolution number 68-R-2024-2025 setting a public hearing on the disposal of property to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Mr. Deragon.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this resolution will set a public hearing on June 2nd, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. in council chambers regarding a disposal of property back to the Department of Transportation related to the Highway 7 and 110 project. So what we're transferring back is property that DOT required us to acquire for the project. Now we transfer it back into their ownership. I call it housekeeping.
Did we pay for it from the DOT?
I'm sure we did.
And they get it back without. Any questions or comments? This will be setting the public hearing. Hearing done then, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 68-R-2024-2025 setting a public hearing on the disposal to property to the Iowa Department of Transportation. And that public hearing will be on June 2nd at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson McKinney.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Ramos. This will also be a roll call vote. So, Councilperson Rickliff.
Aye.
Councilperson McKeon.
Aye.
Councilperson McKinney.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramos.
Aye.
And Councilperson Martinez.
Aye.
That will carry.
Thank you.
Next item is the work session on the proposed property tax legislation. Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Property taxes are said to be at the state level, the most heard complaints by constituents around the states, by all legislators. To address this, some legislators have property tax reform as their highest priority on their agenda, even though their end of session per diem concluded on Friday, May 2nd. So, they're staying over after the per diem to determine some of these things. This can still be considered because it's in the Ways and Means. So, they're still looking at it. So far, we've seen two different variations of proposed property tax reform. The current, one out there right now is the House Study Bill 328 and Senate Study Bill 1227. They mirror each other, but one on each side. There's talk of another one potentially, but as of right now, this is what we have. So, before we get into what's being proposed in the study bills, I want to just take a brief moment to review exactly how property taxes are currently calculated. So, the county provides an annual assessment, which is based on the fair market value of property and recent sales of similar properties. The state takes into account those assessment valuations and provide an assessment limitation factor. This is known as the rollback. So, we don't get a tax currently 100% of the valuation of property. We tax what that rollback amount back to is. For fiscal year 26, residential rollback is 47.4316%, which does include multi-residential because multi-residential does not exist anymore as a class. For commercial industrial, the rollback is the residential rate on the first $150,000 and then 90% on anything above that. The total taxable non-TIF valuation is a, for your, our community is a cumulative of all these individual properties across the state, or across the community, excuse me. Are there any questions about how they're calculated currently before we get into the changes? Okay. Staff with the assistance for a financial advisor have attempted to provide an understanding of the proposed legislation and forecast through modeling the impacts of legislation against the current House File 718, which is what we're currently on. Now, with any kind of modeling or projections, there are some assumptions that we have to include. The assumptions for Storm Lake in the model include our five-year average of 3.615% valuation growth for reassessment years and a 2% consumer price index, which I'll get into a little bit later on why that's going to be included. Also, this model allows for new construction, which new construction is described as anything that was not on the tax roll before. So, new construction, not anything just going on to it that's been pre-existing, but actual new construction. So, for modeling purposes, we've only included the actual property that we are aware of that will be constructed. So, the first number, when we're looking at the two attachments there, I did, I have Storm Lake and Truesdale attached. So, for Storm Lake in the top left side, I want to point out the taxable non-TIF valuation amount. For fiscal year 25-26, the amount that we use was just over $374 million. The proposed legislation for 26-27 has that going up to $676 million. That increase of about $300,000 is a result of the understanding of the proposed legislation that the intent is to remove the assessment limitation factor, basically removing the backfill, and allowing cities and other taxing authorities to tax up to $100,000. How you get to that on the right side of that column is that total revenues, what they're allowing is a minimum of a 0.05% increase. But if you have 2% growth in your valuation, like we have had at 3.61, you can go up to 2%. Then on top of that, depending on what the consumer price index is, you can also account for additional growth up to 5%. So, you can't grow more than 5%. By eliminating the assessment limitation factor, the backfill, the proposed legislation appears to include a $50,000 homestead tax exemption for residential property. This will be on top of the $6,500 reduction for filers of 65 years and older, as well as the up to $7,000 for veterans or military exemptions. So, on the form there, you can see the total revenue is going from just over $3 million, 3.01 million to 3.072 million. And that just continues for the next 10 years that's included on here. The one below that is the comparison for total revenues from the proposed legislation and what we're currently getting on the House File 718. Over the course of the 10 years, it's going to be a little over $1.1 million loss in the city of Storm Lake's general fund. This is just the city of Storm Lake's general fund. The consolidated general fund levy is all that this is looking at. The right one is what the proposed House File 718 dollar amount is that we would propose to get. So, the difference between those two is what's shown on the bottom there. These are Storm Lake's estimates based on the understanding of our proposed legislation. And again, this is all just modeling and there are assumptions built in, so this is just what we're projecting. The next two pages will outline the anticipated impacts for individual property owners based on valuation changes. Page two on here will take into account the, what you're going to pay from fiscal year 26 to what we're projecting that you're going to pay in fiscal year 2031. So, on this one, on this sheet here, the red numbers indicate a reduction in tax burden and the black numbers show an increase in tax burden. Note that the commercial industrial properties hit a breaking point while they'll receive a reduction based on valuations at $250,000 or more, while properties, whether it be senior, non-senior, or the homestead tax credit, those $50,000 is for shift of tax burden, not an actual reduction in the single-family dwelling tax burden. So, the non-homestead tax burden with an assessment of $250,000, it's anticipated to pay $1,292 in fiscal year 2031 versus $954 kernel. That's an increase of about 35% or $338 more that they're going to pay. Are there any questions on that one? On what these, these forms are showing, the red versus the black? Now, the second attachment there, it's going to look very much similar to what Storm Lake does, but we actually took it into consideration because we were asked by some legislators that due to the new homestead tax credit and several smaller communities having community members that would fall under that elderly tax credit, and considered the modeling for these with minimum growth for Truesdale, they're going to, they're going to gain about $7,900 total over 10 years from the consolidated general fund levy. This is based on non-TIF tax valuation decreasing from $969 million to $718 million. That's a reduction. Storm Lake would have, went up $300,000. Because of the community and the reductions in the homestead credits that are available there, they're actually going to see a decline in the total amount of taxable valuation of which that tax can be applied to. So, what does that mean? That means that less valuation is going to have to account for the $7,900 plus the existing tax revenue. So, their tax revenue or their tax levy rate is estimated to go from $8.20 to $11.30 per thousand in valuation. For a property that's $250,000 in Truesdale, very similar to Storm Lake, would go from $973 this year to $2,916 in fiscal year 2031, an increase of 199% for the same service. It's a redistribution of tax burden more than a property tax reform, based on what we're seeing in the models. Both of these are interpretation of the proposed legislation and the modeling for just the general fund levy, the consolidated general fund levy, just remember that. This does not include the county, the school, or any other taxing authorities. Working with our financial advisors who have several modelings for every other levying authority, and the anticipated tax bill implication for $150,000 home will go up 33.6% and 52.2% for a home with $350,000 in Storm Lake together for all taxing authorities. On the commercial side, $150,000, $50,000 commercial property will go up 65.2%, while a $350,000 commercial or industrial property will only go up 7.4%. I believe and we can all agree, as property taxpayers ourselves, some reform is needed in the existing tax system, but our understanding of the current legislation and modeling are not showing a tax reform, but an increase in overall tax obligation with a shift of the tax burden for commercial and industrial property for growing communities and a straight-line increase for smaller communities with no growth. It's our hope that we can work with our legislators on an actual reform that ensures the services and amenities are still available to our citizens. But I'm not sure that's available on this because we'd also reduce our services if we would see this type of.
Tyler, does the modeling, that keeps the assessed values the same through the modeling?
No, I use a 3.615% average increase.
Oh, okay.
In our modeling. So, I'm accounting for existing growth, not new construction. So, it does not account for that. And this is just for the consolidated general fund levy. This is not the benefits levy or the.
So, somebody's assessed value goes up higher than 3.7 whatever, their taxes will be higher than even what this projection shows.
But their consolidated general fund levy is going to be capped at the amount that we can, we can tax out. So, they're, the, the way, the easiest way that I can explain it is they're kind of throwing out, my interpretation of it, they're throwing out what you set for your tax levy. You don't, it doesn't matter what your tax levy is. They're saying what's your property's valued at and what you qualify for, and this is all done at the assessor's office. So, this is what your assessed value is, these are the credits that you account for. And your determination as city council is only, only going to be on the max dollar amount of revenue increase. That max dollar revenue, they're going to, they're going to divide that by what the valuation that kind of gives you and they're going to tell you what your rate is.
They're doing it backwards.
The reverse engineering.
They're starting with the number and coming back with.
That's correct. So, they're, they're capping what that is. Now, they're, they are including the consumer price index, but again, if you look historically, what goods and services are you buying yourselves that are at the consumer price index? They generally come in much higher. It's going to make it harder for local municipalities not only just to provide the essential services that we're providing, but also be competitive within the unemployment market.
Well, I think also when they were using the computer index, the consumer index, it was twice as much as what they were. I mean, if it was going to go up 4%, it was actually six to eight or something like that.
Yep. But they're allowing you to capture a little bit more than the flat.
Right.
2% growth. Originally, I think the first bill added, just capped at 2%, you can't grow more than 2%. Then they added the, the consumer price index to at least try to get that up to 5%. But again, I'm not sure if that's sustainable.
Do the legislatures get, the legislators get this modeling?
Yeah, we worked with our partners at the league and provided them, I know that Kerry's been in touch with all our legislators as well, directly providing them what our modelings are showing.
I don't know, from what I read in the paper today or yesterday, whatever it was, that's, they're going to be there a while if they're going to try to figure this out.
I, I hope so. They're at least taking time this year. I will say when House File 718 happened, it kind of was quick. This one, they've kind of set a timeline to be able to accept input. So, we do appreciate that at least to provide these models. But again, I'd still like to take more time to work. And again, I think that's all that we want. We're all taxpayers too. We want some type of reform. I'm just not sure that this is the best solution for our community.
And Honorable Mayor and Council, yes, I have sent to our local representative and Senator everything that we discussed this evening about the, the current legislation. We heard that there might be something, a third bill maybe coming out, not, not certain. We haven't seen anything. But all of this still needs to be discussed at the Ways and Means Committee for both the Senate and the House. And I urge you to look at the Ways and Means Committee to see who the chair, chair members are and the members of the Ways and Means Committee in hopes that we, we can talk to our own, our own electeds. But we're just hoping that we can get the information out to our public as well and know this is what our modeling is showing. I promised we would talk about budget after we adopted the budget. I think we had one meeting. No, we didn't even have one meeting. We didn't even have one meeting and we're going to be discussing it again. So, we're going to be talking about this a lot, depending upon what direction our elect, our Senator, Senate, our legislators go with, with the bill. our legislators go with, with the bill.
Appreciate all the work that you've done on this.
I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news all the time.
Well, I.
It's a.
I surmised that myself by reading the paper myself, that it wasn't, that any time you have a rollback, if you're gonna do away with a rollback and every time you have forty-seven percent rollback, then that's going to a hundred and, and the commercial, after their first hundred and fifty is only ninety. And they're going, gonna, gonna go up to ten percent, well, you know there's, the shift is there.
So as.
The residential being shifted over the residential.
The services are, that we provide are, are paid for by the people. It's gotta come from someone. And this reform just transitions that from commercial industrial to residential.
Yeah.
The biggest winner of the bill is.
Frustrates me, as far as being a resident, a lot of your commercial businesses are, a lot of your, um, heavy users of some of your.
Services.
Your services that you have in the community and you, you as a resident is gonna, are going to end up almost subsidizing.
And I would say that those commercial industrial businesses also rely on the services. They utilize just as many, but they rely on them when recruiting or anything like that as well for their employment.
It'll be interesting, yeah.
See how it all pans out.
Like I said, if they plan on being, going home anytime soon and having this figured out, they're gonna be there a while. Cause I don't even think they've even come close to trying to figure out TIF part of it.
I, I, yeah.
I don't think they understand where that's gonna go.
No, I don't think they understand the full ramification of that either. We've kind of tried to start modeling that as well, what ifs. And again, there's a lot of assumptions built into it, but that could be another one. We're just talking about the, the consolidated general fund levy here. Um, if there's some consideration for that, we could be looking at other levies as well.
Anybody else have anything to add to the, such an uplifting conversation? But I think that, you know, in my mind, it's going through the legislature as if it's going to be tax savings for residents. And it, it is not gonna be tax savings for the residents.
Now, based on the modeling, we haven't already seen any of the bill, no.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. We appreciate the update. Okay, looks like the next thing is city council requested items. Do we have any items that anybody would like to see on upcoming work sessions? We've certainly had some informative work sessions lately, which is very helpful. Okay. Nat, do you have anything to add, Ms. Nav?
I do, honorable mayor and council. I just want to remind everyone, we're gonna go to the airport on May twelfth, which is a week from today uh, for our joint meeting and we have, we discussed having that meeting at four thirty. Just wanted to get confirmation before we send an agenda out. Four thirty is still good. Yes, okay.
Yep.
That's all I have, honorable mayor and council.
And this is still, this is Storm Lake Proud Week, so we can still, if you still haven't volunteered to help, I think we can still probably find things for you to do. Just contact City Hall. Anything else? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilperson Ramos.
Second, 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 second.
Second by Councilperson McKinney.
I was muted.
I'm glad you came on, otherwise you'd be here all night. Waiting for a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.